Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council this Monday, February the 3rd, 2020, at 7:05 PM. Ms. Berry, would you call the row, please?
Yes. Nancy Brown.
Here.
Rob Baker.
Here.
Rob Powell.
Here.
Daniel Daniel.
Here.
Sam Terry.
Here.
Nancy Terry.
Here.
Hope Ward.
Thank you. At this time, if you would please rise, we will begin our meeting with our prayer led by Reverend John Henry of Greenwood United Methodist Church called by our Pledge of Allegiance by Chief Will Dawson. Let us pray.
Holy God, we thank you for the grace and mercy which you govern this world. We thank you for the freedom to gather together and to offer prayer. We thank you for city leaders who still welcome prayer in their midst in order to discern your will for the communities in which they dwell. We ask your blessing in this room tonight that your Holy Spirit might be present in this time together, that they may hear your guidance for this fine community, and may do everything they can to continue to lead it forward for your will and for our people. We thank you for our mayor, we thank you for our city officials, we thank you for our police officers, our fire officers, our EMS, and everyone who works for our city to make it such a great place. I thank you for the increased security that you've given our churches over this past month as you protect us and keep us safe on Sunday mornings as we worship. We ask your blessing in our life for the experience of the forgiveness of our sins, and we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, which came into this world to show us how to live amongst one another as a community called to care for each other. So be with us tonight, Lord, as we do the work of the city that may be done in your honor and your glory. In your Son's name we pray.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. At this time, I would ask for consideration of approval for the minutes of the January 6th council meeting.
Uh, waiting to add, Jim, we're trying not to call me that, please. You got nothing.
Make the motion to approve the minutes, please.
Say it.
Together, but.
Sign it.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Baker.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Eric Daniel.
Yes.
Sam Terry.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, at this time on our agenda, we have a bid opening. Mr. Jerry Short's here, talking to the weirder. We'll roll to him.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're opening bids on the repainting of the Bellwood Stand Park that's next to the elevated tank. As we confirm, you're just. They submitted a bid bond, a 95% of the total bid. They submitted a bid price of $158,200. They submitted a bid bond, a 95% of the total bid. They submitted a bid price of $162,400. $162,400. They submitted a bid bond, an amount of 5% of the total bid. They submitted a bid price of $175,777 and zero cents. The next bid is from Cunningham Sandalastian Painting Company. They submitted a bid bond, an amount of 5% of the total bid. They submitted a bid price of $186,000 and zero cents. The last bid is from Superior Industrial Maintenance. They submitted a bid bond, an amount of 5% of the total bid. They submitted a bid price of $454,886 and zero cents. $454,886 and zero cents.
Mr. Minkus, please.
I think they were anything to instruct them to take some maybe. You know, take, take these bids under advisement, and try to sort out that so much by their recommendation.
Okay. Thanks for our thing, Mr. Rosie, yes.
Do we need a motion to accept the apparent lowest bidder after conclusion of the tag?
Yes.
Are any of these guys local?
Yeah.
No, sir. Nobody's local?
There's some, you know, from the state, but I'm here in regular, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like a motion that we accept the apparent lowest bidder. Are y'all review it?
Well, responsible, correct, I think. Is that correct? Yeah. Responsible. Those are the stories we do.
Okay. Yes. I mean, that.
Okay. We have a motion.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes.
Sam Terry.
Thank you. Mr. Short. Now, it's a little, um, we have some, we have a lot of distinguished guests here tonight, but two that I would like to invite to the podium if they would like, and I bet they don't turn me down, because these folks are running for office. Ms. Emily White, Judge Emily White, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself. Tell them why you're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilman, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, I just wanted to come up and introduce myself to you. I am Judge Emily White, candidate for the Arkansas Court of Appeals here in District 4. And District 4 is a big district. I'm on the bench right now in a two-county district, that's Hot Springs and Grant Counties. And Hot Springs County is probably the easternmost part of this Court of Appeals district. This Court of Appeals district is District 4. It starts with me in Hot Springs County where I'm currently on the bench, comes up to Garland, Montgomery, Yale, Logan, all the way over to Sebastian, down the Oklahoma line, you can do the math there, all the way down to Texarkana, and back up that Interstate 30 corridor through Polk and Arkadelphia, and back to Malibu. I'm a full-time judge right now. I hear criminal cases, civil cases, here are some, some cases of our circuit courts. But I was appointed pursuant to a gubernatorial appointment by our governor. He's appointed me to be a full-time judge, and then in the summer of 18, he appointed me to be a special associate justice on our Arkansas Supreme Court. But prior to becoming a judge, I had one obligation, and I was a lawyer in this state who investigated and prosecuted judges who committed ethical misconduct. And I worked for our state as a whole for about five years. And I loved it, but that catapulted me, and I got the governor's attention, and that caused him to appoint me to go home to Hot Springs County and be a full-time judge. I've been a Little Rock prosecutor, that's how I cut my teeth trying cases. Hopefully, I'm having my back to you guys, and I'm sorry. I'm so sorry about that. I feel a bit awkward.
Hey, grab that, grab that mic.
I love that. Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Of course, the crowd.
Well, I'm an old trial lawyer, so don't give me too much latitude. Um, I was a Little Rock prosecuting attorney from '01 to '05. Um, I was in private practice for about eight years at one law firm. And then in 2013 is where I joined that very small state agency that investigated and prosecuted judges. But I'm a kid from Polk. Um, I grew up right on the Hot Springs, Grant County line. Uh, my kids still go to school there, but, but I was a Little Rock lawyer for about 17 years, and that taught me things that I would not, I thank God, had I not set out to be a criminal prosecutor in the largest city in this state. But I'm here tonight simply to introduce myself to you. I think it's very important to get out and meet as many folks in the district as I can. I've been campaigning really hard since April the 9th, and I've put 29,000 miles on my Nissan since then. We're in the downhill slide, ladies and gentlemen. Early voting starts on February the 18th, March 3rd is the election, and I will be done on that date, and I'm looking so forward to it. Mayor, thank you for your graciousness, thank you for allowing me to come in. Councilman, Madam Clerk, ladies and gentlemen, thank, thank you for letting me just be, be very brief in introducing myself to all of you. I appreciate it and would consider your, or would appreciate your consideration when voting time comes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge White. Appreciate you. Judge Sam Terry. And you're welcome to work the crowd also.
I've been trying to do that, since she said this is the fun part of the day.
Absolutely.
Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity very much. Thank you all for letting me drop in on, on committee. Good, good to see you. Chief Dawson, as always. I'm Judge Sam Terry. Like Judge White, I was appointed last year by Governor Asa Hutchinson to be a full-time district judge in the Fort Smith district. Judge Wagner's counterpart in Fort Smith, so don't, don't hold that against either one of us. I'm not related to these two gentlemen here, and even if I was, I don't think they would claim me anyway, so. But I, I'm running for circuit court judge, that's a countywide position. The spot-on running board is currently assigned half of the civil cases in Sebastian County, one-third of the probate, like wills, trusts, estates type issues, and then 25% of the dependency neglect that I'll get, which is DHS foster care type cases. I've been an attorney since 2005, had a chance to work in the prosecuting attorney's office here in Sebastian County, prosecuted a number of felony cases, misdemeanor cases, juvenile cases, almost any type of case that would come before a judge. Really was grateful for that opportunity. That was my first chance at public service. So for all the public servants in the room, Chief Dawson, all the councilmen up here, I appreciate your service. Public service is really, I view it as a calling. This, this is what I want to do. I want to serve my community, I care about my community. Unlike most of my classmates in law school, I just, I wanted to come home after I graduated. I didn't want to go off to the, you know, to the big city and, you know, to go out to Little Rock or stay in northwest Arkansas as much, because I love cheering the hogs, and I went to every single home game, and I was up there. This is home for me, so I'm grateful to have, to have had a number of wonderful professional opportunities here. I was a law clerk for a federal judge, Judge PK Holmes, I was the second law clerk that he hired. Really, he informed my traditional philosophy, which is to listen to all sides, be calm, have the right temperament, and a good demeanor. And I feel like I exhibit all of those qualities on the bench today. Early on in my career, I received some advice that I'm sure you all think about, too, is that every day, nearly, you'll encounter folks that have never really had anybody to really listen to them, and to the extent you can really listen to someone and listen to their problems, I think everybody's better off. And I try to think about that every time I, I put on the road. As Judge White mentioned, this election is one month from today, and it's a short month, so this thing's going to be over before we know it. I'll, we'll, I would appreciate your consideration. I think I gave most of you all one of my cards, if I didn't, I could do some, and I'll leave some on the back.
Uh, yes.
Well, I'll, I'll leave some on the back, just in case, but I would appreciate your consideration. I'm the only former full-time prosecutor in my race, I'm the only current judge in my race. I've got the right experience, got the right integrity, and the right commitment to this region. I appreciate your vote on March 3rd. Early voting is two weeks from tomorrow. I can't believe it, but February the 18th, and I think right in this room, isn't there a votes center here in this room? So I would appreciate your consideration. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
I would be remiss if I did not recognize our very own State Representative, Dr. Lee Johnson, in the audience tonight, too. Dr. Lee, would you like to say a few words?
I would say I'm glad that neither of you gathered around for a state rally. They're both really good at what they do. Everybody here, I think I know most people, you know how to get hold of me. If you don't have my number, it's easy to find. I'm having a good time representing everyone the best I can in Little Rock, and I'd be back here in this council room for a little bit, so. Anything, anybody needs, just yell it, you know, you're all right.
Thank you, sir. Nobody said that was supposed to be fun, I'm not sure what's going on.
Always did.
Okay. Senator Matt Pitches, you know, too, oftentimes drops in on us, and he was not able to attend tonight. He called me earlier today, his father was having surgery in Little Rock, and he thinks hopefully it's vital on a, on a leg situation or knee or something like that, but I told him that we would remember in the prayer as you go home, and to your families, because he's Senator Pitches' father, so. Thank you all for being here, appreciate you. And now that you've spoken, I forgot to tell you, if you speak, you have to stay in the duration of the meeting. I won't let I mention that again, just to... Okay, so now, the truly, truly fun part. Without further ado, and without any introduction, I would think I would like for someone to get the lights back to the floor, is that if you... Oh, okay, you got them? And we're going to show you a little clip, a little video, and then we will talk about it in just a second. I'm sorry, Counsel, it's eyes in the back, you're it. We'll fix that one, you guys. We do.
So you know how I've been shooting that last night?
Uh-huh.
Well, I got really hungry, and I ate all of her candy. I'm sorry.
You're just joking. You made me eat my candy.
I did. I was really hungry.
Well, I know, but I was really hungry, and I didn't have any other food, I'm really sorry. Will you show me something fun, fun here?
I'm really sorry.
You need some? Mommy, I'm not, I'm not mad at you. It's okay.
All right. Sir. I would have liked to have thought I was that cute when I was little, and obviously I was not. This is what you do if you need to talk, everybody, just get that out of your way. So this young man is Rutledge Chase Grousse. If you, if you mind coming up here with me? I'll tell you what I'm going to do. Get you to a little booster stand, if that's okay? Can I, can I pick you up? Or you? I don't want to miss. There we go. You stand up if you want to. Want to stand up or sit down?
Yeah.
You're good. Okay. This is, this is, again, Rutledge Chase Grousse, and the reason that we, and he's not from Greenwood yet, basically, I believe you guys dwell in Mansfield or...
No, I live in Greenwood.
Oh, you do live in Greenwood? Even better. You're the one that doesn't dwell there.
I live here.
Yeah. Okay. So awesome, that's even better. I, I guess I was thinking he was down there with you. So, uh, this young man is the grandson of one of our employees here, Chad Grousse, who works over our, our street department. And I first saw this video on Facebook, and I had no idea who he was, where he's from. I thought it was somebody from California or something. I thought that is the cutest thing I've ever seen, uh, because I don't know how many children, how many young men would make sure that their mommy's okay after that, and just check. And now we've got a junior here, too, that's going to... I told him, I told this guy a while ago. No pressure for you, but I just thought that was the coolest thing, and since, I didn't care if he was from Greenwood or not, I just wanted to recognize him and tell him what we think about his... Oh, my goodness. Here, wait, wait. Here. Tom didn't need your chair.
No.
Oh, there you go. There you go. Can you sit back a little? There we go. How's that? You guys aren't brothers, are you?
Yeah.
Barely a tick. So I just wanted to bring this guy in and introduce you to him, because this guy may take our places, judges and my place for sure, represent whoever. This guy may be running the whole world here one of these days. So I'm going to read a proclamation, which probably won't mean a lot to you right now, but I'm, I'm, I want to read this about Mr., Mr. Rutledge here. May I call you... What's your nickname? Rutledge. Silly name. Can I call you Rudd? You would let me call you anything, wouldn't you? All right. This is a proclamation on behalf of the people of Greenwood, the city of Greenwood, by the Mayor Doug Kinslow, looking to publicly recognize Rutledge Chase Grousse. He's fine. Whereas the city of Greenwood, Arkansas takes any opportunity to commend its young citizens for their outstanding contributions to the quality of life in this community. And if we all had the attitude you have, we would be a much happier community, I can promise you. We're a pretty good community as it is. Whereas a video was made of a three-year-old Rutledge Grousse's response to his mother's confessing she had eaten all his honey and candy. Now, before you leave, I think the chief would like to speak to you. That's a whole other situation altogether. Uh, and whereas the video shows Rutledge showing compassionate kindness as he forgives his mother, and whereas Rutledge's video has been viewed and shared over 60 million times on news and media outlets such as Instagram, YouTube, Facebook, People Magazine, Fox 26, Houston, and Five News, and whereas Rutledge Grousse demonstrates kindness and compassion can be shown at any age, and therefore, Doug Kinslow, you hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim February the 3rd, 2020, as Rutledge Chase Grousse Day. So, give it up for Mr. Rutledge. Typically, on a day like this, when I make it their day, as you all know that are here often, I give the receiver of this the opportunity, the chief loves this, to drive their vehicle around the square as fast as they possibly want to. Now, I don't know what you have at home. Do you have a little car? Is it, what kind of car do you have? You know, is it a little truck or just a pedal car? Uh...
A four-wheeler.
It's just a... Hey, it's a four-wheeler. Well, I don't like a lot of that. It's out there on the city street.
No. You have a Jeep.
Oh, you have a Jeep?
Yeah.
Yeah. You can bring that down, and we'll take you around the square. And we'll say off the state highway. We'll, we'll have fun over on the side, okay? If you want to do that. And we'll have a police help. Would that be cool? Okay? Uh-huh? But that'd be all right? Okay, hold on to that for me. Now, I've got a couple of other things for you. One's not as important as the other, this being the lesser, probably. This is a key to the city, okay? So what this means from this, as being a key to the city, you can't get in my office or anything, can't get in City Hall, but really what it is, it's a symbol of all, this is a key to all the hearts of around, we like to think around 10,000 people in the city of Greenwood, because we thank that much of you for what you did, and we know what's in there, right there, don't we? From what you did on that video. Can I put this around you? I don't get to normally do this either. There you go. So that's a key to the city. Now, what was it that your mom ate that she finally confessed to? What was that that you were looking for? I forgot. It was candy? Well, I just happened to have, I don't know what kind you liked, but we happen to have a couple of bags for you tonight to make up for that. M&amp;M's and Skittles. Are those okay? You have to promise me something. Mommy doesn't lay her hands on you. These are yours, and it's going to be all over the news and all over the paper that I gave these to you. So if she eats these, you let me know, okay? Thank you, sir, for being here. You are awesome. That's yours, too. That's yours, too. Thank you, buddy. The rest of y'all should be that nice that gives you some. Thank you, guys. Thank you. See you, guys.
Your mother, she didn't eat none.
No, not...
She didn't eat candy?
Not any of them.
Yeah. Grandpa got the candy.
That's right.
I don't know. They completely... They're done with me. Okay, moving on. Committee reports, boys' girls' club, committee report. I'm leaving. Yep, go ahead. Mr. Kenny Short, from... Tim.
Uh, real quick, just like, appreciate everything y'all do for us. Right now, just sum it all up, we have basketball, cheerleading, soccer, playing football, baseball, all going on this, uh, this month. I want to bring, instead of just a regular report, I know most of y'all have been out there coaching and doing stuff on a sports program, but I wanted to bring you a little booklet that we put together that explains the day as it goes on for the after school, as well as a little history of the club and everything. So, uh, I know probably Tim and Lance will probably, one of the first year members, too. That was, what, '73?
Maybe, yeah.
But, man, there's some stuff on there, what improvements have we done this year? So I just would let y'all look at that and have a coffee, see what's going on out there in my local business. Does anybody have any questions for us, or...
Gentlemen? Should I take the book with us?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Got one, too, if I got one.
Yeah.
I was just, I was going to give you a hard time. Thank you, sir.
We do appreciate everything y'all do, and again, entire board, coach, reps, all that. We need you, Tim. You got regular, okay?
There you go.
We can negotiate. I mean, I think if you pay us $150 a night, we're going to provide a bad, bad go on, so. But thank y'all. Don't be a stranger, stop out, drink some coffee. See you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Who retests this photo for you?
That was two years ago. That was two years. The grave was putting too much on the camera.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, y'all. Appreciate what you do out there. Uh, sorry. Is RCA... Is he in? And we're going to touch on the contract a few later, so. Make sure you're here.
Please, it's convenient, like I said.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. And, uh, we need to raise up the senior center for the pool room, so if you, yeah, are interested... Yeah, come on down. They can still get rowdy.
I'm an ancient Dawson.
I stopped the mayor of that, it was too much.
Was it too much? Oh, bingo, 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 worse. So. And, please, they give me her report for the month of January, and the month of January for us had 23 operating days. We had one day that we were down for snow, and we backed off from that, from the pool players that were waiting outside the doors. But we do have a policy, when the schools are closed, we are closed. Sometimes, we can probably open, but I promise you, those seniors will get out. Sometimes we can probably open, but I promise you, those seniors will get out and they will get on those, uh, the ice and stuff, they will fall, so a lot of times it is for their safety. Um, we will try to run, you know, limited bans, just different things. We really try to make sure that they get care of it. A lot of times, when the school is closed, we are closed also. And then we had one day that we were off for New Year's Day. So we had a total of twenty-one operating days. And, um, Lisa done five hundred and thirty-three hundred meals. And that's where you actually go into the senior centers that be, like pool, things like that. She had fourteen hundred and sixty home delivery meals. Those are the ones that we deliver not only inside city limits, but outside city limits. That's her area. Uh, well, I'm sorry, let me take that back. The fourteen sixty are just in Greenwood. That's not included Sebastian County outside of that, Greenwood city limits. And, uh, socialization, she had four hundred and forty-seven units. That's where the residents come into the senior center and they play pool, bingo, at some form of civilization. And she didn't have any transportation this much, meaning that we just didn't have anyone that we picked up. We're just down at Rogers this month. But that is a service that we do offer. If someone is in city limits, we will go pick them up with our van and bring them to the senior center. So just keep that in mind, especially if you hear somebody, you know, ask him to go, so. And, uh, one other thing I really want to stress is, um, this is, uh, census 2020 is this year and I'm on a committee for Sebastian County for that. And I have learned so much and I want to really stress, if you know a senior that's having difficulty filling out their census or if they need help, please let us know. If they can't come and they need help, myself, Lisa, we will go to their houses to do it. We're probably gonna open the senior center up a couple of days also during census time to have people come in if they want help because it is very important. Everybody counts. And our cities, our counties need that money very, very bad. And I looked at the list and so many of the programs that fund me are also, you know, because from that census, I was just amazed at what all, it even determines your, how many state representatives you're supposed to have. So for, you know, Dr. Johnson, we gotta really, you know, make that count so we can keep these state representatives and things like that in place. And so again, if you hear anybody having any trouble, it doesn't have to be a senior, but if they want help, we will help them. We're not gonna tell them nobody knows, so just please let us know. And we do appreciate, and everything that you all do for our senior center. We cannot do it without you. You guys are more than welcome to come, just like Kenny said, ref. You guys are more than welcome to come and sit, ride on the vans and help deliver meals, things like that. You know, if you want to see what goes on, what your money's going for, things like that. We do appreciate you guys. I have any questions at all?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Remember, census 2020.
Yes, ma'am.
Everybody counts.
Indeed, they do, that's for sure. Uh, our commission.
City Council, is there any trouble there? Council received a copy of your pack. Basically what's going on at the front. Couple of things that I want to point out. The old iron bridge. We have an estimate of about three hundred and forty thousand dollars. But what's lacking is approaches to that, you know, bridge. So that price is gonna probably go up. What we're gonna look into is three components. One is trails, grants, the fishing game for part of that bridge is gonna be fishing for the kids. And there's one other item that I talked to Ralph regarding, uh, what's the name of that, Ralph?
The green field axe.
Yeah, so we, we'll be looking at three different grants to see what we can do about getting that old iron rework and approaches to it. See, that's one big item. There's another item that was brought up last month, and that was the Wolf and Trail lighting. And, uh, Russ Carson, Casey, we're all phases working on a quote on that right now. And we get that information, we'll present it to the council. The other item is the ninety-foot bridge behind City, City Hall. We're gonna go out and try to see how much it's gonna cost to have that bridge placed. What goes into that, whatever pilots, et cetera, close to the Mount Homay Road over the water as possible. So anybody walking that trail will now have to go back out down Mount Homay Road. Other than that, you have all of your notes in your folder. Any questions?
Hey Joel?
Yes?
And Michael Jones emailed that each set on the iron bridge.
Yes.
And he said, um, they're looking at the budget to insert the bridge inside the old trust and two connecting bridges on each end. The way I read his email, he's talking about the connecting on each end.
I gotta see that. I haven't seen anything yet.
Were you gonna do a copy of that? I kinda read it the same way as far, and I'm not saying he's completely the same. I, I think what you're saying is that could be the approaches that you're.
I mean, that's, that's the way I took it was.
Why you still turn on both ends?
That's the way I took it. That doesn't mean I know where I'm.
Yeah, no, I kinda took it that way too.
Well, that was great.
Yes.
Could be more.
And two, if you, if you don't mind, and I don't know if Mr. Batty's spoken to you yet, because they have considerations, if I'm not speaking out of line, Water Commission about, once you start looking at this, about the raising of that bridge to accommodate possibility of more water or obviously fishermen want to go. But I don't know if that's gotten that far yet or not.
Well, depends on how that may look.
Sure.
We'd like to keep it close to the original one, the bridge as possible. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited about the, both of those bridge projects. I told Ms. Bradley, if she got that done, she might be better than that other architect. Not the original one, mind you, that other. Okay, nobody, nevermind, let's move on. I think it's awesome, we're looking at those things. Water, which Water Commission was failing.
Not a whole lot of report this month, though. We do have ordinance of rights, sewer rights. Not get around to that, answering questions until we get to that. But, uh, they walked us close to y'all last month and went to a certain point, then they go down after two years. And we eliminated going down after two years. So I think some of y'all had concerns about, you know, bettering ourselves short in the future. Some member of the commission, the same thing. When we had our budget working meeting with y'all, Tom gave us some revenue numbers going back about four or five years. And, uh, we didn't realize our revenues, you know, been down this last two, it's been down three years in a row. And looking at the reasons for that, it seems like maybe, you know, low plus bullets and showerheads and all this stuff is adding effects. So we should keep selling less water for customer, be hard to go back for lower rate. And then the other thing we mentioned in our last meeting is we're gonna start working long-term planning for some things, uh, building five-year project plans so we got our products executed a little better. We're gonna look at how we deal with the rural water districts incorporating them versus, you know, far areas from, really sewer capacity, because we were pretty close this year. You know, we got too close to our upper end. We're really at sewer capacity and contaminant for sewer system. And the last is, uh, water products primarily looking for long, long-range water source. Looking out for, uh, any questions?
Thanks, sir. We are at the system forum in our, in our meeting. And one lady that is out of Mr. Paul Wiggach, if you would mind, as always, heading through the mic. Give us your name and address, please.
Holloway Gap, Court 245, Crystal Circle, Green Hill, Upper East Side. Yes, this is the last time I think we're coming out of this subject. I think you guys have another gift or something. I may just have to.
Any, any, can you just?
What I just passed out was some, some signatures from the neighbors in the area that some duplexes are, uh, one to tilt on the corner of Houston and Coker. I didn't realize this until I started walking the neighborhood, but a lot of those people on this list are senior citizens, they're older people that have been in this neighborhood for years, senior citizens years. They do not want to live next to duplexes in their neighborhood. And I'm a simple over couple because you've already heard my reasons, but I'm just gonna state it once again. I, I believe that there are more appropriate locations in our city to put duplexes instead of sitting in the midst of an existing single-family area. You're gonna add, you're gonna be squeezing four families onto one lot where normally one family would, would go with probably a minimum of eight cars on that lot. Not including visitor parking, so where's everybody supposed to park? There's not gonna be any garages. I understand the two story that's proposed is gonna have carports. But that's not improving the neighborhood, the look of the neighborhood. They're gonna have, there's no place for people to store anything. I can realize that as it sits now, there are carports in the neighborhood, but it looks awful when people don't have a place to store. There are barbecues, there are kids caught, there are bicycles, the trash cans, everybody's adult toys, things like that, they just sit in the carports. A lot of people don't even park in the carports, they park in the driveway. So that's just one thing. That's gonna add excessive traffic. There, there's an impact on utilities such as the garbage, sewer and more water. Not to mention the noise of more cars and more people. And I think normally, they're not long-term residents, people come and go in rentals of this sort. And so the people that live there, they don't want to live next to that. I mean, revitalizing an area does not mean that you have to have a dense population in the midst of a single-family area. I mean, we have a brand new single-family home building up on Fresno, right in that same neighborhood. There's no reason why on this property, we can't have a single-family home where there would be no objection with the neighbors around there. They just don't want to live next to two duplexes. So I realize that there was a duplex that already was built on east, that lived east Lincoln. Already one family's been chased out of there, they decided they don't want to live there, make move down Greenwood. The people next to this proposed property on Houston and Coker, they're a young family. They have two small children. I've been talking with the wife, they're talking about, they don't want to live in Greenwood because they don't want to raise their two children next to this type of property. So again, you're gonna chase out another family. How many families are we gonna chase out by, by putting these duplexes there? Now, when we talk about the main street, I also walked all over the other side of the high school. I walked Maple Ridge, I walked along in that Knoxville, Lincoln area. There's, most of the people don't want duplexes. I'm just letting you know, don't know if you're gonna, gonna talk to the people. But there's only half a lot of all the people I talked to that really want to live next to a duplex. So, um, I'm just asking you to really reconsider before you take this last vote. Our motto is in Greenwood, is it not? Greenwood feels like home. Apparently doesn't feel like home to a few families already.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, uh, this time we are at the managerial report. I think Tom is just gonna give you a brief summary, or maybe mention some sales tax.
All of us give you the city sales and UTEC's actual statistics, so you can keep them for your reference. Kind of great months, January, as you know, but the financials of the city, the city was presented at the January coming out second poll meeting with the budget review. So the budget's, uh, getting finalized now. There is some changes that we're making on the revenue stream based on the proposed increase in sewer rates. So they're, they're actually flowing through now on the budget. And that's because we're doing the ordinance three readings. So the target date for the location will change back. So that's already the revenue expectation on the sewer side, so. Be able to get that as soon as we get this, uh, ordinance produced, repaired, starting to go through the flow. Go get a copy of the actual, uh, budget, so we're next to you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Tom? No, we'll move on. I need to make a, I'll make a suggestion that we move one of the items up to the topical list here, which would be number six on your, uh, new business, uh, council. Okay, we have folks here from Regions who would probably like to get on before three o'clock in the morning. So, uh, Ms. Batty, Weston Burger, Kevin Rogers here from Regions to discuss that item. Is that okay if I move that up?
That's true.
I'll be heavy on Gavin, I have a good. So, uh, I'll let. Oh, I'm sorry, I was anxious to move that up. Let me do agenda items, sorry. So this is not gonna play you well if you just said to me. We do have some agenda items. So number nine, we will call it number nine, is, uh, SRCA contract. Number ten, lease agreement with Farmers Bank, which is tying together, we listed them separate. And then eleven would be the intergovernmental agreement. Interlocal agreement, I'm sorry, the county, I don't know that, did we get, did we get that copy? You can get it back from the battery. Would you go to my last month's packet, I think, and get that agreement so we can find that we need? Is that more copies? But you can't, just intergovernmental, no, interlocal agreement, yeah, thank you. Uh, is that it? Cause we're rebooting and we're proceeding through.
Yeah, we're not.
Okay. So we go to those additions. Okay, so now we'll go back to these folks and with Regions, if you want to.
Yeah.
Do a little spin-off course on that.
Sure. Do you want to mention anything else? Okay.
Come up, come on, sir.
Retirement Committee held a meeting as we do.
I don't have any candy for you. I can't follow that guy either.
Regions is our new investment advisors. Yes, for the retirement plan. And they have been very impressive this far and supplying us with such well-written, well-presented, easy-to-understand information about the way our plan is invested and what is announced. So they did an analysis of our Port Longview.
Yes.
And, uh, explained some options, four different options about staying where we were, paying, you know, in some different ways. And the retirement committee voted to go with what's now as an option three out of this presentation. And it entails changing the custodians of the plan so that we can reach out and invest in broader areas that are prevented, that were prevented from investing right now with Boya. And is there anything else you'd like to add? I know you could do a lot better than that.
Well, basically, uh, just changes of custodians will allow, Boya has some limitations. They're the current custodian. They have limitations on, um, the investments that are available. In fact, it's a very narrow amount of investments. We actually operate a non-operated system that will allow it to be much broader base and also would save the plan about roughly ten thousand dollars a year. And money that will end up in participants' accounts and just the participants of the plan. So, uh, from a standpoint, uh, we also will keep the current TPA, who does the record keeping for the plan. So we'll maintain. the plan, so we'll maintain that lower cost. We'll provide continuous investment monitoring, which is part of our as advisor, and offer a much wider array of investments. And also provide the committee with a more analytical, defined methodology for analyzing and reviewing not only investments, but also the vendors that they deal with.
Our plan was really done a lot before, and we interviewed a couple, I think two different investment advisors, wasn't it?
Three included.
Correct. And we overwhelmed each other with Regions, so we're excited. But we do ask for authorization from the council to change the custodians, so we, our employee plan can admit it.
We just went to Voya last year, right?
No, we've been with Voya a while. The previous investment advisor, she went off in a different direction completely, and we had to abandon an attempt to change custodian in the intention, so Lincoln, I think it was?
When?
When? It was like a year and a half ago or so.
Well, it's supposed to be a year.
We've had, well, it's been Voya this whole time, we didn't change. You said we just went Voya, no, we've been. It was ING.
Four Voya, it was ING.
ID is the same.
They changed, I knew it changed.
Changed names.
Got authorized there.
Y'all been with Voya for a very long period of time. There's different roles, there's advisors, there's custodians, and there are directors. So, your current custodian is Voya, and I don't know the exact, it's several years.
This will be the same, this will be a custodian role?
Yeah, Regions, we have a custodian role.
Well, was there, are the other ones, you know, were there other ones that were lost in the community for their job as well?
Yes.
Not anywhere that could come up with the savings that they do and the investment strategies that they offer. This is not a cost to the city other than what you invest into the plan for associate. This is just permission for us to manage the account through them a lot better, a lot more fiscally responsible, and give a higher yield return back to the actual report. That's something they've been wanting, they're on the committee, we have a lot of employees that are involved in the actual committee, and it's something that they voice over and over again, that they're not getting the return that, you know, they wish they could, they wish they had more say in it. And this way, we have some say with what they provide to us to be able to manage it probably at a broader and quicker basis to get back with them. But we're very impressed with the heat map that they give us and how they look at their investing or the monies that we get through the seven-and-a-half percent retirement contribution. So, I'm very impressed, the committee's very impressed. We vetted them pretty tough, actually, but they were headed above anybody else as far as the presentation and our confidence level in them and what they've brought to the table.
The savings is to the employees that are investing?
That's correct.
It's not all to the city, just the employees to their investing. And the savings here is fees.
The fees actually flow back through the program, the actual employee that has the account, it's the allocation to them, that those fees are...
The reduction in those costs that employees experience while invested in the platform that they're on. If I go into a different platform that has a much wider and broader array, gives us options to go out and select a lower-cost, better performing class.
So, the employees have a lot more, they have more options as far as stocks they can invest, or?
The employees have no options.
Employees don't do that.
This committee, through them, actually is the strategies behind how we get that money invested. They did an allocation, it's a pooled account that we allocate down to them. But if the employee wants to have full control over theirs, they go into their own time and plan, they contribute through their payroll, and then they decide how they want their money.
It's two different plans.
Yeah, they're not allowed to do that.
One is employee contributory, and one is the, really, for lack of better words, picture plan that the city provides.
Like a motion to be dropped for a resolution?
Sorry, have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Good day, all.
Senator?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I'll just continue calling the numbers as they are, and I suppose, thank you for giving that.
Yes.
Daniel. Next item on the agenda is planning, building, ordinance, rezoning, R1, R5 property in North Coker and Houston Street, third reading.
Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Terry, I'm front, I tell you tonight to ask for the approval of the rezoning from R1 to R5 of the property located in North Coker and Houston Street. This is the third final reading. I gave you a copy of the flat where, and the location of the proposed two structures, and if you'll notice that on Houston Street and also on Coker Street, there will be sidewalks added to the property, there'll be the only sidewalks in the, in the whole area over there. So, it is on its way to improving that, not only that property, but the area. We have talked about this for, this will be the third month that we do much in the planning commission, and I would like to move forward with this. Mr. Brown is here, and if you do have any questions, I think that you've seen the quality of the buildings that he builds. The area over there needs quality buildings, and he will certainly bring that to him. Mr. Brown has a good reputation with these buildings, and the one that he has built from Cedar and Dogwood, all of his properties are rented out with a waiting list because of the quality of the houses that he builds.
I'd like to address one thing, mainly because I made a public statement that we'd make sure, and I know we've already had meetings and discussed this, and I want to make sure that we are, it is being worked on, and we'll be working on sort of the drainage issues there. And Mr. Brown knows where I'm talking, speaking of North Coker, there's a, what I'm calling the alley, we go between old, being your property and eventually end up in your property, as we got. On the end that is your property, there's a, years ago, I don't know who, I don't know where, it doesn't matter, someone, I don't think there's a Coker there, but it's been built up to allow a vehicle to get into that alley. Is your plan, I'm assuming your plan would be to either gutter that, or, not gutter, I'm not sure what the term is, to put pipe in there and land that water around that? Because I, I'm not an engineer by any means, but I, I think for sure...
There will be a drainage study on the property and make sure that the water is diverted to the proper...
Because I think some of the things that you had addressed earlier on, in my opinion, definitely is a result, a direct result of that, just not having pipe, simple as that. Therefore, it's not allowed to run down Gary, so, okay, so the study was rebuilt.
And we've seen things like that around the city that was the result of not planning.
Correct.
And this is in the plans.
Which applies that week now.
And it will only improve as we go on.
That's the only question I ever comment on.
You know, I just say this, and I guess I'd say this to Mr. Brown, the, for me personally, I don't have a high level of confidence in the future of this. I would love to see you build carports or, you know, these things with garages and, I personally don't like the layout of it, but I have no rational reason to tell you you can't do it. You know, that's my personal opinion about it, which is, or is what you pay for it. And so, you know, I would just, I guess, personally, I would ask you to consider, you know, ways to, you know, carports, I understand all those things cost money, you know, I don't know how it works. You know, places to put trash cans, storage for small things and that kind of thing, just because, you know, rental property, the day it's finished, it took both problems. It's five years, 10 years down the road, and as they age and those things are not there. You know, I think that's probably where you can see the problems more than anything. But again, I have no rational reason to stand here and say I'm not going to be a favor.
We've talked about this before, but, you know, a half block away on Gary Street there's already duplexes, there's duplexes and apartments on Houston Street, and...
No, I'm not against it because of the duplex at all.
Well, this gives us the ability to, for the owner, as we, as we bring these into the planning commission, and this kills the same with Mr. Shawn Lynn's property out there. The developers are aware that we're holding them responsible for the maintenance of that property, it's not the renter place to mow lawns and pick up trash and things, that's goes back to the owner of the property, and he, pretty much, he's over the covenants of his own property, and he is the first one that I would contact if there's a problem. And again, with Mr. Brown, the properties that he has built over in the others is a fine example of it. I mean, he's got concrete pads for the trash cans, you know, the lawns are manicured, he saved trees when he could. He has gone out on, out on a limb and built some nice structures in this town. And, you know, not only is he, is he doing duplexes, you know, we're looking at single-family residents in other places. And because of the quality of his homes, we feel confident that it will only improve the areas that he's building in.
Any other discussion? The, now, which, the two-story on the actual corner of Houston and...
No, sir, that's the one, if you're looking at this drawing, Mr. Brown, the two-story is the one down here. The single story is on the corner of Houston and Coker, the two-story is on Coker. And another thing that I noticed the other day, there was something in, I want to say, I don't know that it was in the Fortune newspaper, it might have been in one of the magazines, but they showed this particular structure in Chappy Crossing in an area over there that they're, they're using this design in some of their multifamily projects over there. So, it's a, if you've driven out by the medical school, you'll see, you know, the white two-story duplexes and apartments and things like that, just similar to that.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
The two-story that he's talking about is in a little courtyard over there, in the Oxyer County College over there, Chappy. And it's very cute, I've gone through, I've gone through them, and I think they're very adorable. But I think that's for like more student, there's, but they're laid out on the floor for student housing, up and down with the two stories. If I get a little courtyard, and if we had a place like that in an area in our city, I would love them, because I think they're very cute. But I just object to that kind of thing in the midst of our residential area. I mean, we're talking about the people that have lived there for years and years have to look at that. I mean, it's cute, if he's been building it like that, I mean, they are cute. But in the residential area, I just object to that. There's other better places to place that kind of situation, I feel. The residents feel too, because when I was getting signatures for this, more than one time, people said, more duplexes? No, we don't, we don't need any more duplexes, all signed. But I got that one several times. So, anyways, you need to have a finger on the pulse of the residents in your city, I just don't think that would do.
The only thing I would say, Mr. Brown, your list of signatures is there's a, there's a large amount in Cape Town Loop, which is not in this area. I mean, it's, I know where that's located.
I walk down that area because a lot of those people have to drive up down the street and take their kids back and going to school, so they're affected too. And there's going to be out of traffic on that corner, people pulling in and out of those, those two duplexes there, so there's going to be more traffic jam on that corner as it goes up the street line.
You know, the one thing I would just say to you about that, about our finger on the pulse, I mean, I think, you know, I understand what you're saying, but, but you're asking us to regulate taste, and that's what we can't do. I mean, I made the comment, I would like to see you do this differently. That's my opinion, it's, that's about taste, you know, if he builds it completely to spec, paints it purple, we can't do, there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, yeah, remember when I...
We're, we're having to follow a set of regulations, and whether we...
Remember when we started this, you know, the, the area that was affected, I sent out letters to them, and I sent out 17 letters, and then I went to rental, they were rentals, they weren't permanent residents. Mr. Baker, you know, he grew up in that area, he knows that, that a lot of those houses are, are not rentals as it is, but because you're a renter, doesn't mean you're licensed as a citizen.
One more second, briefly, please.
I understand that you can't know what everyone's doing, and I understand you have to follow rules, but I'm, I'm, just my hand on the other end. Anyway, I don't know, I can't remember what's the mistake, it's so important. I'm tired of fighting this too, but it's just that I just know, oh, the people just, the people there don't want to live there, live that. I mean, like I said, they're chasing a family away, a young family, that's going to have one of their brother, two children, and they're not going to want to stay because they have to live with duplexes. There's nothing, there's no regulation that says you have to pass this rezoning through this corner. It could be, you could, you could build this in another area group, but we're just asking you not to, to pass this rezoning through this corner.
Well, I would disagree with, we're running something away from Greenwood too, and I, people have the right to move wherever they want to move, they can move within Greenwood and not live by a duplex, but that's just my two cents on that. Councilman?
Is there any history on this law, how long it's been, this is a big law?
Nobody can find out when it was ever built on. And like I said, Ralph grew up in that area, I think, Daniel might have, do you ever remember anything on that corner? You know, this secretary came in here and said 20 years ago, her brother-in-law wanted to put duplexes on that, and she was 14. So, that means that it was empty 20 years ago, and as far as my, my records go back, there's never been anything there, you know.
I grew up on Fresno, that blocks we knew to be all mine.
Yeah, that's, that's my...
That's true.
So, that's the only history I know, I think, that, that just, that gives us the opportunity to put something there, you know, we've taken that advantage over on Lincoln Street and some other places, over in the office, Cedar and Dogwood, that houses were long way during the tornado, that nobody ever built a pack, and they were just empty blocks that were constantly needing to be mowed or whatever, and...
I'll just say something else, Trevor.
Diserved.
Obviously, that road is a cut-through for students, which is very, I say very busy, busy for that road, and more is obviously if those kids slow down and sit there. If you're not sitting there between seven and eight, you'd be... If you're not sitting there between seven and eight, you'd be lucky to see three cars in an hour. These other places, these duplexes we built, it's not having traffic problems, so that that is not an issue for traffic, especially for these side roads. If it wasn't that particular road, it's not cut through road, it would have hardly any traffic. Uh, if that road for some reason, I think the kids, they can cut through there and get to school quicker, uh, that, that creates little, little traffic problem to have. We sit there a bunch and...
They cut through there less quick now with the sign?
Yes, with the sign, and I can tell you, I've sat on that road plenty of times and wrote plenty of the rings and tickets, and, and now I sit there for an hour and no one speeds. Uh, and I'm not saying they never do, but I'm, I'm there, they know that we sit there a bunch and, and stop signs, and, and I sit there and slow down traffic, but as far as an increased problem of traffic that we don't see that happening, and I sit there a lot more. Two duplexes, it's not going to add any traffic account that's going to have any effect on that road.
You know, if you move over to Denver, that's...
And, uh, Mary, you were saying that there's going to be a drainage?
Absolutely, drainage study will be performed, and I've made it very clear, I mean, I, I think, again, not an engineer, but I think that's some of that problem.
Well, but Brown could tell you, when we have a meeting on, on projects, whether it's his or any, but anything else, one of the first things that we say is the drainage has to be studied. It will not get any worse than what it is, and our, our goal is to make each, uh, project make the drainage better. Okay, that's the drainage problem around here. The tree department's working to, uh, make it better, and we are too when, when new projects come in.
We even addressed this, and he just said, I'm trying to repeat it, we, we addressed this, whether we, whether the, whether that potentially project, potential project could create, if there was never any problems there before, we look at it as what, what are we doing that could cause them? I mean, it's flat as a glitter, as my grandmother used to say, it, it, it takes the same...
Well, we're looking at, we're looking at a project upon Ashbury Corner, you know, that's on top of the hill. First thing that we do is get a drainage study to make sure that that water is coming off of there, it's not going to affect somebody, you know? And then we start talking about, you know, the other one. Chad and Dennis, you know, they go over the, the layout of the subdivision, and that's what they're looking at mainly because the roads are already there, but they're looking at the drainage, and so we're very conscientious about that.
Change the jet something, or are you just stressing?
Oh, I'm stressing, but I can't say something.
Well, I'm not invited to say anything, once... I don't need to.
I'm a landlord.
I'm a landlord of Real One West Houston, down the street, it's been our family for three, or four generations, probably the largest lot up there. I'll tell you that I have not built a house on that lot because the property values are too low, we build a house and we, what we want to live in. So also, we've never built there, our houses around us are deteriorated, and this probably is the best thing that's happened in that area. We have duplexes behind us, or three behind us, four, five, two that have been there my whole life, and three that were done for us in college. Um, the house right beside this lot is a house that's never had, well, sometimes it has electricity, sometimes it doesn't. Um, and of all people that live there, I know everybody'd love to see a single-family dwelling built there, but that's not something that's feasible for homeowners. And so that lot is set empty for years and years. And so, the house beside it has had multiple people in it, uh, rent, and, uh, I would just like to see something very nice, or something nice built up in there, be nice, something for all those houses, and some, some change in that neighborhood, but, um, it just is what it is. I'd rather see someone build a nice duplex brick and need today's code, but what we have up there, it doesn't need any code, it hasn't had code in a hundred and twenty years, so minimum age, my grandmother's house that I stood on, and, uh, most of the houses around the grandparent, or her parents lived the two complexes down, and so that whole neighborhood's been around that way for a long time. So, it's, it's, it's been a long time since we've seen any improvements up there. Like the latest house to be built up there was probably when, uh, the bridges built the house, two houses, so, uh, Donna Bridges and Larry Bridges built the houses there, and there hasn't been any people up there since, since they probably not lived there in thirty-plus years. And so there's no movement going on in that area, this is the first time. And so for all of us that live up there, our own property up there, it'd probably be nice to see some further removals and some changes in the house. All the area down, I've got two duplexes, two houses, or one house over from me that has been there, uh, as long as I've been alive, just definitely that neighborhood, it hasn't changed too fine the houses around us, and, uh, it'd be nice to see some nice new code meaning houses and new ones up there. So, I've been holding my, hold, holding my comments up to the third reading, but because the property over up there, it'd be nice to see some new changes.
And, and I don't want anybody leaving or leaving any of these meetings when we're talking about these homes in certain areas of town, we refer to them as being old, as being anti-old home Ringwood, that's not our point at all. I live in a home that is over a hundred years old, uh, and, and do some things to bring it back to code, but, uh, that's what you do when you buy one, or you're expected to do, so that's not our point, is just to get rid of old homes. I love them, I love them, it sets my personality, it's old, but, so that, so that's to say that we're not, we're not trying to wipe out an old neighborhood in any means, but, but as you said, this lot, I don't know either, I've lived here all my life, certainly, I didn't live in that neighborhood particularly, but I don't ever remember what, what they were like being there, ever. I remember playing football over there. Anyway, I think we've...
I think, you know, our urban developer consultant, you know, one time, you know, really does, is, oh, to me, purpose of, um, rezoning areas tomorrow, when we're five, was to kind of fill in, you know, uh, areas that, you know, have been vacant lots for a long time, you know, and get interest in that stuff, and so I think, uh, and like I said, here, this has been a vacant lot for a very long time, and then all of a sudden now, now there's been interest in it, you know, which will help with going forward.
I agree, I would like to, I mean, we are entertaining a motion at this time, and we move along, in whatever direction you feel like we need to. We'll make a motion if we adopt it. Ordinance, on second.
Third, on third reading, by Todd Lundley? That's going to be the correct, sorry, about last?
Yes.
About third reading, by Todd Lundley?
Yes. Make motion second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
I am staying.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Dick, uh, Tintner?
No.
Huh? Nice Terry?
Yes.
That would be, let's see.
That's cool.
That's cool, okay. That's about the words.
I almost can't.
Yeah, that's fine. An ordinance admitting ordinance number eighteen, actually, on the purpose of rezonating certain property in City of Cleveland, admitting the officials on the map of the City of Ringwood's other purposes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bell. Okay, um, number two, council ordinance establishing salary benefits for city attorney's second reading.
Brought this ordinance back to you for the second reading, with the changes that we discussed in the first reading, uh, the, what's been changed has been highlighted and the salary figures that have been inserted.
Right, where's the ordinance, four forty-eight?
Well, that's, it's attached, you may not have yours attached?
No, I got it, I just couldn't handle this part.
And Daniel, I, I know in Charlotte it said we had things in existence, I know it predated me, uh, four forty-eight was signed by Cindy Julian, and ordinance zero-zero-sixteen was signed by Judy Selker, so I knew it predated me, that we hadn't done it in a long time.
Well, so here's what I, here's my question about this. This ordinance, four forty-eight, talks about the duties of the city attorney, which are listed in that, in parts all along. Right?
No. We'll, we'll go background for information. That ordinance was adopted positively, they were decided.
April, not new one.
Okay, April was not even one, I came into the, uh, office, I put this plan in, Park is turning November of ninety, and whenever I was elected and came on board, Mr. Sigman did not like me, and they were all six pending, and Mr. Sigman made a comment in public that, uh, I was in touch with Bill Walters, and he was on Bill Walters in the city politics, and so he indicated that he thought, at the time I was president, he thought, and at the time, he thought that, uh, for this hundred dollars per month, that I should be responsible for handling all litigation, because the city got sued, uh, even if it required me to work a hundred hours, unless I should only get paid that. And so that was the purpose of going up that ordinance, uh, was to, to spell out some of the things that he wanted to include in there. Uh, subsequently, and later, and, uh, I guess I kind of drew on you, but that was the initial, um, I guess this is the first time anybody ever stood up with the duty for, I thought up that there were lawsuits pending, that whether it was all coming out, I'd take it over, and that I would like to get paid, it was time to do that, and I didn't get paid for it, but, uh, like I said, I do, I'll go over time, with past parade, probably with my best friends. So, that, that doesn't exactly go with what states, state law just says that you adopting ordinance is spell out what the duties are or are due to the attorney.
Well, one of the things we've talked about over the last few years is when we do this kind of thing, is instead of amending this, admitting that, and all that, we repeal those old ordinances into the other way. Because this four forty-eight says that you're going to tend to attend, and get paid six hundred dollars a month.
I did that, and we don't have to be, you know, I'll figure out.
The six hundred part though, we...
So, and then what got it funded over here?
Section seven, that four forty-eight is made a rule.
What, what's this one, though, oh, oh sixteen?
That's maybe four forty-eight as well, about the burden.
Maybe.
It's all about the burden, because the duties are separate.
We're, we're building out completely.
So I guess my point is, why not just repeal the other ordinance, just get them off the book?
And you wouldn't have any duties spelled out, if that's what you wanted. And amend this, other words, to include all the duties, I guess.
I'm okay with repealing, repealing it. Did you want to add some general duties to the existing ordinance when we repeal it?
It's a amendment, four forty-eight, repeal the oh sixteen. Four forty-eight is the one that just tells the duties.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm all for repealing oh sixteen, you know, but, uh, that's some of the duties.
All, all oh sixteen does is says, we're going to set the pay via the budget as approved.
Right, right.
It's just setting the salary.
That's exactly what you do.
Which is what we've been doing all along.
The, the old ordinance establishes what my duties are, you remember, we don't have the end of meetings, I think it says I'm supposed to pin the duties, all the duty there and the duty there, because I hope the ten thousand, that's how I'm requesting for.
But states that, states that we do this for...
States that, you say, you have such duties of the city clerk, you told you, uh...
Doesn't municipal handbook say something about city attorneys?
Well, that, that's what states that you, says whenever you establish the, uh, the duties, yeah.
Like the city clerk's duty, you don't spell out either, it's just...
That's a tiny...
Yeah, that's true, too. City clerk has some duties that, um, they have to publish certain things at certain times, otherwise, there's nothing that says you have to be at work at some certain time, you're responsible to balance and check, and all that. City attorney doesn't have that.
Doesn't have that for city council either, we're elected the same as you.
That's true.
That's why I'm, that needs to be the four forty-eight, we're not...
I try to comply with everything in city next up, like I said, I'm very, like, on the third condition, but I don't think I trust the city anything for any extra litigation. We refer to the municipal league, and I haven't trusted anything extra for thirty-one, you know, thirty-one years, so...
I think we've paid some filing fees before, you might have, or something like that, but not extra time.
Yeah, that's probably the, I forgot a check for the, the rest of the...
I'd be willing to...
So are you okay with amending ordinance four forty-eight, or do you want to repeal? I'm pretty sure we're open.
Because like my ordinance and mayor's ordinance, I haven't even said any of it.
But I don't have any issue with something there, it doesn't bother me, it's like it is, I like it to the best of my ability.
So you guys are happy with the way it stands?
Yeah.
Yes.
A little max salary.
I appreciate you guys, so...
I'll make a motion, we put this on for the second reading by Todd Lundley.
Motion second, put on.
Well, it's the second reading.
Second reading for Todd Lundley.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Tintner?
Yes.
Nice Terry?
Yes.
Dennis? An ordinance admitting ordinance number four forty-eight, continuing ordinance zero-zero-dash-sixteen establishing salary benefits for the elected city attorney for City of Cleveland, Arkansas, for other purposes.
Thank you. Number three is Park's, we're just awaiting bidding on basketball courts resurfacing with emergency passage.
Mayor, what's the name of the company? They're out of Tulsa, they've done, they've done the track at Dream High School, they've also done work at Chappy Crossing, they have come highly recommended from the Lord of Robinson, uh, development authority at Chappy Crossing. Budgeted forty thousand all.
Is that the cost, forty thousand all?
Just under forty. But, there'll be more, I'm assuming, they're, they're kind of all resurfacing completely, digging out all the bad, uh, concrete that's up there now, filling in wherever the cracks are, then they'll do the resurfacing, and there, there's three different levels of surfacing. One side will be the stripe for the basketball court, other side will be the pickleball court, there'll be fencing in between.
Does that include fencing?
It does not include the gates to the fence.
Oh, the fence, okay.
It's within the basketball, pickleball court.
And the emergency clause is officially get started?
Well, uh, he says he can be ready to go beginning of March. We'd like to get it done before spring, and the guys and kids will be out there playing basketball, so...
Well, when you say, you know, there will probably be more, she is...
You know, we've got to talk about lighting, there is some lighting, but we need to kind of replace that lighting, uh, different company, and I would like to see the two gates on both sides to go in and out, good question.
Okay, that'll be a separate project.
Is this just for resurfacing a basketball court?
And strapping, but there'll be a, what they call fencing between basketball and pickleball.
I'll make a motion, we put this on for the first reading by Todd Lundley.
Make a motion second, put it on for the first reading, Todd Lundley.
It's Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Nice Terry?
Yes.
Dennis? An ordinance fighting competitive bid for resurfacing basketball courts at Bell Park, to clarify emergency, if that occurs.
Propose emergency clause going to be there?
Did you hear the discussion that you said, or?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I mean, you're still got, you can do three readings without emergency clause, now within thirty days.
That's true.
Before March. Second.
Motion second to waive the second, third reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim, Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Make a motion, we adopt the, uh, emergency clause, am I going to go with this?
No, not the order.
No, you just removed the order. Did you?
Adopt the ordinance now.
Yes, to adopt the ordinance now. Well, you didn't, yes, just adopt the ordinance. Okay, could you just remove the second to...
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
We don't.
Say.
First, a motion and a second, so you adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go resurface, go forth and resurface.
Out of this public, public shit, we'll be effective thirty days after public.
Don't do it tomorrow. Uh, or, um, number four, repeal and replace the ordinance number fifteen dash seventeen, requiring solicitor permanent first reading. We, uh, had a lengthy discussion this morning in our department ad.
Better than here.
Just so you know, we took about a two hour, hour and a half discussion on this, to try to do that in a department ad meeting, so we wouldn't do this evening, but, um, now I got to get my bearings, because we went about five different directions. Uh, we're actually excluding, uh, that food, so...
Yeah, we're going to ask the title of mobile dinner, because we have other issues to settle with it, or bring it to you, or anything.
I'm sorry, just refresh my memory on the solicitor, this is...
The solicitor's permit, we discovered or realized that it didn't have anything about background check in there, which is being done by the department. And, and to put it in there, and also, that it wasn't a pass or fail thing, so that the police department would issue. So, like, you get it no matter what, you know, so, it needed line in there to reflect what's being done.
And you, you must say, yellow, the new stuff?
It's been added, yeah.
Yellow is added, struck out, of course, it's removed.
So, did that, did you hear that in the nutshell?
And, um, so, if, we actually, after our script discussion today, we asked that probably number twelve not be part of this amendment, where it's, where it's exempting mobile food vendors, because group counterfeits, that that needs to be done, which was part of the discussion.
So, mobile vendor, we don't care their background, but a bricklayer, we do?
No, we, no, we're not. We don't, we don't do background on a bricklayer or a business.
But in the order, they'll...
Yeah.
That's, that was part of the, huge part of the discussion today, in my opinion, was, it's opinion, is that the folks that we are allowing to go door to door, I feel certainly they need a background check. I'm not sure that a vendor, even though they're mobile, a mobile food vendor typically does not move. They move from city to city, or they move from position to position within the city, they don't go door to door. So, my point was, and where, I guess where you were going, was that if we're going to require a mobile food vendor to have a background check, why would we not require a brick and mortar food vendor to, to have a background check? They're both selling food, neither one of them are going, you are going to them, they're not coming to you, even though they're mobile. Solicitor, in my opinion, is a completely different ballgame, a door to door solicitor. And that, that's my take, my issue.
So, you're saying the mobile vendor has to have a background check, does not?
Correct.
Well, yes, I do, I heard.
They do now.
That's why I...
But we don't do anything about it, once they do, am I correct, Jim? We don't have teeth in, all we're saying is that...
They pass fail.
Well...
It wasn't in our...
It's not in our ordinance that they, anything happens to them, if they fail.
On, on that process, for me, I mean, that person's self-employed, that has a mobile vendor.
Correct.
Okay, that wouldn't be any different than myself, being self-employed, and my services, going to people's houses, and, you'll say, to, to me, that, I mean, if they have a permits license, then, are we going to say, everybody needs a background check? Because I mean, they're supposed to have a permits license to be, to do a business agreement anyway, so... It sounds like to me, to be a can of worms, now, the solicitor, I can see somebody going door to door, I mean, I could, I could kind of, but, I, I don't know, I don't know if...
You're right, I mean, you...
Where's the, where's the, where's the fine line in that?
I don't know, you, you are correct, your, your business, as, as Mr. Powell's,
Right.
goes hard as one, door to door, you're right.
Sure.
Uh, so, you are at their home, as, as in the guy that was selling back in the day, his armpits.
Right. I've got two addresses, which need to go to.
Yeah.
So, we, what's?
What's to keep us from?
What's the difference?
Background checking you?
Well, I, I think...
Anyway, I, for the title, it's, it's, you know, solicitors and door to door, that is a point, I'm sorry. I just last, it's, it's solicitors and door to door handlers, I mean, okay, you're not going door to door soliciting. He's, they, he's been called, that point was just...
Right, exemption is people that are called upon.
Yeah.
Or is it safer?
Am I right?
You're being, uh...
I, I was just saying, I mean, I'm just trying to, I mean, people, I mean, they ask for it, they're going to be, you know, saying a mobile vendor, I'm just saying.
Right.
So, uh...
I would just say, my...
Same as, same as a brick and mortar, they're, you're going over that.
Not there.
I would say that if, if about a mobile vendor guy comes to town, and he was in northwest Arkansas, and you wonder why he's left, you know, P Ridge, or wherever, and you know somebody up in P Ridge, they said, well, they can deal dope out the back of that ridge. So, I kind of like to know why you relocated in Greeland, but, I mean, if I, I, I obviously, it's a little hearsay, but, I would say hypothetical situation, if you heard, he got ran out of town for some shady stuff, who would have teeth enough to say, can you check this guy out, chief?
And, and on the same token, if he left northwest Arkansas from a local Taco Bell, okay, not Taco Bell, but a, a, it's his own business, Mom and Pop, Taco Bell, and he left abruptly, and he comes down here, uh, we don't check him because he's brick and mortar, but it could, it could be the same scenario, I, I...
Yeah.
It's, it's, there's a fine, there's a couple of fine lines.
Well, I just, with the mobile deal, I guess, my, the fly by night, a little bit lethal to the cover darkness deal, kind of, I guess, is what, make more shavings, even somebody that's going to start establishing, make yourselves...
Yeah, but I don't know that we have the authority or the capacity to do that, could we?
We are requiring the permits license, or whatever.
Right.
That doesn't require background check for any business, right?
No, but it, it does say, they tell you, because they have to get all required permits, dish, uh, I would say.
Not solicitor's permit, mobile food vendor does.
Yeah, mobile food vendor does.
But we're, we're asking about just the mobile, I mean, this is a permit. We're trying, we're, we're asking, asking, what?
We're going to go back for the other, because, and, and I have Danielle, she's checked with, and I know we don't necessarily like to do this, but you might as well, instead of trying to reinvent the food vendor thing, and I know there's a lot of work put into this thing, and we just want the other one a year or two, or three ago. I don't, I think it still hadn't turned out correctly, so we're looking to see what other people do. Just to see, not just to sell.
Give us the flip-flop version, what we're trying to do here with those old ones.
Do that again, you did it better than I did.
Uh, number four, solicitor's permit?
Yes.
We'd like to strike number twelve, which is highlighted on the second page, and adopt the rest of this.
And what, and where we're at with the background checks on the solicitors, is we're, that's going to be required for door to door peddling solicitor, transient urgent, and outdoor vendors.
But you're, but this is a new ordinance, right?
Yes, we're repealing and replacing it.
Repealing. So, that, that line is section one, that whole line needs to strike.
Well, uh...
That doesn't make sense.
My, um, what do you call it? Said that to me on the phone, I transcribed it for him, but, um, section one, we can, he said to put that in there, so I don't...
Well, you're saying that those two ordinances are expressly repealed and hereby amended.
And are hereby...
They're repealed, they're not being amended.
Well, and the, yes, right.
They're gone.
Then they're just need to be expressly repealed, period.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, if you said that, it'd be common, so that's what I'm saying, it made that more sense.
Well, no, he...
Section one, A.
I believe that has to be in there, doesn't it? You have to say in section one.
You have to say that has to be repealed. Okay, feel with that, where we pick up with A, that would be section...
That's authoritative order.
Do you now see why we talked for two hours, and one?
We've got, we've got three readings, we can give a five, put it on for first reading. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt this first reading, striking section twelve.
Do you make a motion?
Yes. Say that again.
I'll make a motion, we put this on for first reading by Todd Longley, striking number twelve.
Yeah, we have, sir.
Y'all figure it out for the second reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Nice Terry?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number zero nine dash zero two, and fifteen dash seventeen, regulating virtual peddlers, solicitors, transient merchants, and outdoor vendors, that's the, the agreement, establishing accountability of...
Thank you. I don't know if the other, the table heard that, but we have a councilman that's okay with all background checks on all title layers. Anything down there. We don't hold your comments.
Yeah, I know what it is.
Did the judge, judge still here? Okay, we are tabling, uh, item number five. I'm waiting for it.
I make a motion.
Say again.
Thank you, motion second to table five, number five.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Thank you, we have, take care of item number six, leave number seven, city clerk, resolution many, resolution one fifteen dash forty seven, regarding mail opening procedures.
I guess it relates to the senior, because he's the one that brought this to him.
Yeah, this, this just became, brought to, became, this came to my attention a week or two ago, uh, we just didn't really have, we didn't, we didn't have a resolution, for one thing.
No, we haven't, it was in place.
That's right, it was in place.
There was a request to change.
To change, so... Discussing it, with the key players, uh, the one you have in front of you seems to make sense to all of us to that, the most, I suppose, so...
Well, financial assistant was there before.
Right.
The one that gave the technical, but, I guess that...
And we did add, sorry. I don't know that section three was quite as, uh, did we, we, I, I made that a little more clear.
Yeah, we will not open individuals.
That is there, yes, yes.
So, one of, one of the reasons for this resolution, first, I, because we receive money. Pounds are mailed to the city, so it's beneficial, and the auditors have mentioned it in the past, they would prefer two people open the mail, so that, that can be a witness to what's received. Of course, we won't open it if it's specifically addressed, which I've often in the past said, well, then somebody could receive money, you know, just because of the title to the envelope, but, okay.
In, in my opinion, I think others, maybe just mine, this will make it just operate easier and more efficient.
So, it was financial assistant, then me, city clerk, then the executive assistants in there, now it's going to be the city clerk, the chairman, whatever, then the executive assistant, and finance director, and the finance assistant.
My opinion, finance department has much more important things to do than picking up the mail, and seeing that it's open, and that's what, and it's a lot. I think in section two, should it say, on that first sentence, and finance director, instead of finance department? Because down at the bottom part of it, you said the finance director will pick up the daddy mail to the mayor's finance department.
What do you think?
That's just, oh, the keys.
Does it not matter to you, whether, you're a janitor? So, you want to trade that to the regular? So, that would mean that the financial assistant really shouldn't ever be picking up the mail, so...
Well, you can say... Just referring to the keys, is the first point you're talking about, it's just referring to the, what keys you have.
Department has the keys.
Right, yeah, so, the department has the keys, but then, then it talks about, he's picking it up, he's talking about a place and then a person. Well, I was going to say, if you're, if you're saying, you don't tell the finance director to pay up the mail, then I think the finance department, uh, the finance director should have... Well, yeah, not necessarily, because if something... And then that's all you can put. Well, but we do point you out specifically.
If the other two are...
Can you say designate of the finance department, or?
I would, I, I'm with AC, I would stick with three people.
We are.
Just fix it to say that Tom has the keys.
Okay.
Tom.
Somebody is going to have an I O key, okay, there's only two keys, I'm going to have one, there's only two keys. So, whoever's first and second needs to keep keys. He has access to my office, he can get my chemo on right here. Good?
Good.
Yes.
But, I think...
You wrote this up, it said three people have a key.
I didn't, I, but that's...
I agree. Thing three is mark out the department, the director.
Okay, on section two?
The first section, section two.
Back to...
Know what you're saying, is, yes?
So, I think we get my city clerk and his executive assistant? So, go on its part, because there's only two keys, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Get off the hook, Tom.
Well, for that.
For the moment.
For the part. I need to put the key.
You put the key.
If he, okay, I'm in love, yes, I'm good.
We're good with that? Just take that part out, and finance department, that's the only thing here, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the resolution with the four major changes.
Thank you. And motion second, Tom.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mike Maker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, number eight, Department of Mission. Ordinance amending ordinance number twelve dash ten, adopting an increase in sewer rates, first reading. Make a motion, we adopt this, uh, ordinance by first reading. Or, or, first reading.
Oh.
Second.
We have a motion, second, discussion.
This has, this has a list of callback rates, which you said you're not going to do.
Uh, no.
That's just for about a few information about...
Right, is this a part of this ordinance?
Nope.
No.
I'm visiting, it's your information.
Okay, fine.
And if you look at your...
Ouch.
A little true.
Oh, ouch.
When did everything?
Right, but that's what they wanted, they wanted it soon. We have a motion, the second.
We have, we have a motion, sir.
That was AC, I mean it.
Mr. Brown.
Powell. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim Terry?
No.
Nice Terry?
No.
As about the Jordan? An ordinance adopting an increase in sewer rates, revealing ordinance one dash ten, in front of...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bailey, for moving to the front. Uh, number nine, S R C A. You will have, you don't have, uh...
I don't have it.
Down.
I have.
Yeah. It's all, it's all, it's all been, uh, paused for effect. Okay, as you know, our contract for services, uh, basically ended on the first of the, or ended January, correct, the third one? So, uh, this is what's, we've, we got together, talking out of discussions, I know we's.
This contract runs through December. We're actually a month without contract.
Right, alright, yeah, I meant, I said January, not December. So I think Mr. Navy's been in touch with it a little bit. I don't think you've had an opportunity to get back yet, I think. Is that correct? Same saying or?
I talked to Norman Rookerson.
No, this is, this is not everything. This is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is the contract.
SRCA.
Correct. We do have the other one here too.
No, I have not talked to him about it.
Okay. So if you want to go with the highlights, third.
Is somebody supposed to be in touch with him?
I think Tom, he's at your office.
You did? Okay.
Third.
Here in my office.
Okay.
What, um, what this contract does is go into much greater detail. Before, there was an exhibit A and a very short contract that said, they will provide these services and we will provide, I think it was fifteen thousand dollars, and that was it. All we're trying to do here is shift some of the things out of the lease agreement that we currently have with farmers that stipulated, basically things that we'd say are covered by the contract between us and SRCA. We put it in the SRCA contract, similar to the boys club. So what this contract does, it says basically the whereas is, is that we're seeking to engage the SRCA nonprofit organization for the purpose of operating and providing senior service, senior center services within contracted communities we're being want. Whereas both parties acknowledge that the city of Greenwood could not or was not willing to purchase, if they were not willing to purchase the services, SRCA would be financially unable to provide the services to the citizens of Greenwood. Further, both parties acknowledge that this is a unique service, that the city of Greenwood would have great difficulty providing on its own, which is true, it's not even unbilled. Uh, we're getting a, a lease building through Farmer's Bank for the sole restricted purpose of a senior center. Now, what we identified in here is the provision of services is exhibit A. That has not changed, other than the fact that we now have added nine thousand dollars to the fifteen thousand in a discussion that we had with shifting what used to be a contract we have with area agency into the SRCA. So the dollar amount has changed. It says, uh, the term shall be January one, two thousand twenty to December thirty first, two thousand twenty. Contract is funded on an annual basis, paid out in monthly installments. Future funding is at the sole discretion of the city council of the city of Greenwood, based on the financial needs of the city and its annual financial obligations. You're not locked into that. You can change that to twenty-four thousand dollars per year or after the term of the contract. It does say in the consideration clause number three, that it's for twenty-four thousand for what makes up exhibit A. And then other considerations, you asked for a cap on certain expenses, because before it was in and all costs. In this case, we say as additional consideration, city agrees to reimburse SRCA the cost of utilities up to but not exceeding a total of fourteen thousand five hundred. That is correctly, but it's in the approved budget. That is their run rate right now, so hopefully that gives them incentive. We've had a conversation with the Anna and the SRCA. And it does kind of help them know that they should be a little prudent to kind of shut off lights and close windows and, personally, they can't open them anyway, but what we understand. One of the things that I also suggested to the mayor we do in conjunction with this is have an energy survey done, which we can do to make it more energy efficient, to help keep those until the cost down. We can work with our partnering electric companies to go in and do that, give us an assessment and develop it some of the costs. It goes on to say that, uh, fourteen thousand per year and for the cost of routine repair and maintenance up to and not exceeding a total of ten thousand per year right now. Their, their run rate for what we had last year, if you annualize it, was about eighteen thousand, or it got right up to about eighteen thousand. There are some capital costs, but in association with that, we are excluding the capital. We'll end it up from this that prepares and maintenance is routine, repairs and maintenance, things that they need to get fixed, or some electrical work, or some plumbing work, or something like that, we'll go in and do up to a maximum of ten thousand per year. Doesn't mean you can't revisit it later. They can't come back to you if they have a need. One of, one of the things that we did though is add a clause called capital expenditures and improvements. Any capital expenditure or capital improvement necessary to maintain an acceptable level of service that stipulated in exhibit A for the safety and benefit of the city's senior citizens must be presented to the city council for consideration on an individual case by case basis. Funding for capital related items will be at the sole discretion of the city council and the city of Greenwood, based on fund availability, along with the current future financial needs and obligations of the city. So you're going to be looking at, is it something you can afford to you and is it necessary and vital to do for the safety and or the, uh, needs of the residents, of our residents, the participants in the senior center? So it gives you on a one by one basis, if you're going to put in a new air conditioning unit, maybe there's some things we can do to mitigate some of that cost, but you're going to address them individually. There's not a cap dollar amount in there right now. You know, there's some major capital expenditures that they're potentially looking at in the next couple of years. The reason this is a one-year contract, or we're looking to do a one-year contract with them, is so that these things in the future, as we know them, and like, uh, if they're going to be there for three years and we're looking at possibly doing something down the road, maybe what we could do is look at what some of their capital needs are between now and the time you think that they'll be potentially out of that building and somewhere else. This gives us a partnering with them to kind of work with them to keep their costs down. Six-month operations, I got through financials, six months, they were, uh, I think you were right at about eight thousand dollars in the hole or somewhere in that. Their year, their operating year ends June thirtieth, so, you know, they, they've got some financial challenges right now and some of the costs that are incurred, that they're incurring that are potentially not being reimbursed could get way out of whack if we have to, they have to start bearing some of the additional costs with what we cap in here. So we need to work closely with them on a month-to-month basis. Now, I did put in here that we have the right to, they're agreeing to furnish the city with periodic financial statements upon request. They have no problem with doing that in our conversation we've had. Other than that, um, the contract termination clause is one of the things I put in there. It does give the ability to terminate a contract without cause within it upon a ninety-day notice. This is three months or then three months to walk from the agreement. It's a standard, uh, there was nothing in the other contract that allowed for that. And that's the contract that we're looking to. We've had a discussion with, um, Deanna and she didn't have any issues that I know of. We even talked about the capital clause in there.
The only issue I have with, uh, everything that's created except for the capital clause and, and all, uh, it looks okay right here in black and white, but I'd sure like to have one more sentence that says, and all this is pursuant to what we discussed with Farmer's Bank, yada, yada, because I think, uh, obviously we've talked about ongoing discussions or the life they're up with the bank, which I don't know why that hasn't been fully taken care of yet, but, I, I think that we need to discuss with them, if there's catastrophic capital improvements, roof, air conditioning unit, van blows up, that, then get on board with the city and help it out or do their part, or however that we should be worded in the negotiation of the deal. We, we've talked a lot about having to do all these agreements to a building we don't own, building repairs. I don't know if that's a real way to spend taxpayer dollars, but I didn't see it to me like, I'd like to, I'd like to see something in the Farmer's Bank negotiations where they would say, yeah, if it is never roofed, we'll, we'll put that building.
The idea to address that, if number one, it's currently in the Farmer's agreement lease that says we are responsible for that. However, in the new lease that you have in front of you, plus what's written in this contract, it's vague on purpose, because you don't have to approve any capital expenditures and it gives you the ability to hear what their needs are and for us to go back on that one-on-one basis with farmers and try to negotiate something with them. See, if I put a cap in there, then we're pretty much putting a line in the sand. Farmers may not go, go with that. What we're trying to do is we're trying to get a more friendly lease agreement from a cost perspective with farmers. So if you look at your agreement that I wrote up, it's pretty much almost worded exactly, except with, in section three, we have taken some of the discussion of, that we had previously about we're responsible for all costs and all operating costs of the city of SRCA. We took that out. We also reduced the liability coverage from a million dollars to half a million dollars. And the key word I want you to focus on is in the second line, where it says, ask consideration for the lease agreement, Greenwood agrees to pay owners the sum of one dollar per year and in addition, pay all routine maintenance needed to keep the property in good condition. The words routine was added so that it's not all maintenance costs, including capital related. Because right now, they are looking at potential for a new roof, and that is something we want to go back and talk with farmers about.
I think that should max at ten thousand dollars to be.
I used.
See with this other.
Pardon?
Excuse me. I would like for that sentence to say that we'll pay routine maintenance up to ten thousand dollars. To max this contract we have for SRCA. Otherwise, it doesn't matter. You're, you're held out here.
You could put it in there.
Yeah, if there's not a number, then there's no ceiling on that.
Has anybody approached that issue with Farmer's?
We haven't gone to live.
We've not had a chance to go back. We've been there once. I've had a couple of phone conversation, conversations.
I don't have any, Farmer's is, uh, somebody is going to have to go over and talk to Farmer's. And I don't mind going with you to go over there, but, uh, I, I think this is a good starting place. I'm not real sure that Farmer's is going to go to the ten thousand dollar figure for the, uh, routine maintenance figure, but I don't know that.
They, they kind of leaned toward it a little bit that they could. I, I don't think they have, I don't, I can't speak for them, but from my conversations with them, we've, I've had several times, I'm just dabbing at this, but we've not been over, but the last time I talked to Standover was us to get what we wanted to get together, bring it back. I said, well, how quickly can you get, excuse me, can you have many of the old board members? He said, I don't even know that we need to necessarily do that. We all feel the same, uh, but I was, I, I think I'm very confident in saying that in my understanding, they have, and I'm not saying if a tornado came through more and the roof was ripped off, they wouldn't be helping, but other than that, I don't think there's any intention of doing any major anything to that facility. So on that note, and this is irrelevant, not irrelevant, we are looking, we are doing other things. We're reaching out, we're looking, we're talking to people. And I'm talking about another facility, a new facility. All, I'm going to bring everything that I can bring back to the table and, and Dr. Johnson's and Senator Pitts himself trying to help. So I'll bring a lot more stuff back to you for you to decide or think about, but that's my opinion, that they're, they're not looking good. And I know it leaks right now, so we are, we, in the routine, I'm not sure I disagree with that max. I mean, see what they say, the nurse, the C, I guess. I don't know that needs to be rubbed. I know it leaks. It, it, well, I know we talked about it years ago.
Well, that's the single biggest.
Sir?
Oh, wait, no, no, I'd probably have moved.
Yeah, I think so.
That, that has been the single biggest contentious point of the whole thing is this needs fixed, now these fixed, we need a new roof, we need new that, whatever, and we're just stuck.
So I.
Well, single to this thing.
I'd rather ask, bring money toward a facility that didn't need that, whether it's new or. I'm using that for the mayor's too. Are you really a robot?
I am a computer expert.
It's a halftime show.
That's a halftime. I agree with Daniel. I'd like to see, um, uh, in section three, you know, to say, you know, omit all and just say pay for routine maintenance up to and not exceeding a total of ten K per year. That's what we, that's what we have.
I'd say an annual maximum of ten thousand dollars for all routine maintenance needed.
Let me, let me ask you, are you guys looking at passing either one of these tonight or is this just for our?
No, we just need to know where our negotiating level is.
We need to get her, we need to get her service contract.
We need to have a service contract approved with her.
Her, but not, not this.
At least for the, uh, well, there's two issues. One is the reimbursement. And if they're going to, if we're going to cap with them, then we need to cap. That's separate and apart from what the expectation is on the lease. And then the other is the, uh, two thousand dollars a month that they're able to report for their operations. We have the check, we're still holding it right now because technically we can't release it, even though it was in the budget, we approved the budget, we have not negotiated or talked about what's in the contract, so I'd, I'd rather be better served for the city to, to at least the two thousand disbursement, and then we can work on the.
The capital, of course, was added at number twelve. I think that's pretty good language. I don't have any issues with that.
I thought you did present it for a year.
I think, I think on number three of the SRCA contract, I would specifically state that it's routine repair and maintenance of the building. We're just not going to do maintenance repairs, coffee machines, or ice makers, or whatever.
Is that current, Lynn? That's not in. We've never, we've never had anything like us, coffeeers or anything like that.
We learned a lot.
Never been expected. Never been, nothing like that. Ever been expected.
I know, but twenty years after we signed the first, we learned a lot.
Oh, I have to. Yeah, I have to.
So I don't want to be here ten years with everybody saying, well, doesn't say we don't fix the ice machine.
Look, no one is getting working on this. I've been bringing it to the attention month after month after month, so I took a stab at it and it wasn't really hit them. So modified, I don't know.
Whoa, so it's like, what was the check you said you had there? It was for the two?
Twenty-four thousand equals installments over each month.
I got a little short division.
Twelve times two.
Okay.
The two thousand a month, I don't remember if it's just.
Okay, sorry, we're going back and forth here, but back to the lease agreement. What do you, what do we think those terms going to be?
That's a nice little question. I'd like a short-term lease, but what's your long-range plan? Do you want to build a new building? Here's a thing to be thinking about. If you get out of that building, you go somewhere else, then you have the option of not having it be a restricted first purpose building. So you can use it after hours for other events. You can actually produce revenue from it for other events. You're not locked into a restricted purpose over here. That's a, that's a restricted purpose senior center period. And can't use it for anything else before or after.
Yeah, the only time that we even attempted, I say attempted, we asked about that was back when I was a park director and I was looking for another, a satellite home for boys and girls club, if you will, here in town where kids can walk to, but I had approached, I don't know if it was the bank first, I guess, because I didn't know what the kind of situation was about using it after hours, and they said it was in the contract. What they were looking at for, we never pursued it after that because.
Out of all this, that's the only thing I don't like is the restricted purpose. Because if you look in parks, uh, minutes that they're making, they, we've got two communities having prom at our pavilion. Lumville and.
Nice to live there.
We have a lot of weddings and there was another place to have a kitchen that could, other things could be done. We could actually pull a little bit of revenue to help.
Yeah, I don't know that their facility lends its stuff to.
Theirs doesn't, but if you stream remodel or our own.
Oh, our own, yes, absolutely. I think there's already, I just talked to Mayor Baxter about theirs and Mayor Aaron. Mayor first about theirs and they both utilize it for things to not conflict.
Back when you were parks director.
That is correct. Even the one at Fort Smith where my main office is, it ran off the big one and we actually, it does get used for rentals and things like that. That just kind of goes back into the maintenance of that particular building. So that's how we.
This service that we're providing, this is what communities do. This is what good government does. We're going to have to provide this service. It's their restricted use is what kind of gets me. I just wish we could open it up, move parks over, put them up in parks office, open up the little tables to more than just being sixty year olds. There ought to be some twelve year olds playing sixty year olds, you know, that type of deal. And on Saturdays, it should be granted out to a wedding reception with the wedding up at the pavilion.
Yeah, new facility, absolutely.
Tom, the one thing you have here is number eight of the lease agreement that gives you a ninety day out. Assuming that that clause remains in the contract, the term of the contract.
That wasn't in the original. I kind of see some things in here. I was hoping they wouldn't read it too carefully.
Well, I think it ought to be there. I mean, if that's there, it makes the term of the contract a lot less damaging.
And I've been attached with them and this, I'm just reporting, don't shoot the messenger, but the thought process over there to make is they want it to be a three year lease. And when he says that, he also says, but we understand at any time during that three year lease, you have the opportunity grants, whatever, build you one, find another place, all that, you're out, they're done. And as you know, we're talking about, he was telling me that he also says, beside the sign over there says, release for X amount of dollars. It felt like they could probably lease it. I don't know if they can or not, but anyway, that's just a number he gave me to. I guess to think about it. I don't think we're interested in a three year. I was assuming that once a lot of facts were brought back to you regarding grants and cost and design and placement and where to go and how it's all that is that we all know nothing gets done in a year for sure. I don't know how long it took to get to the, you guys can't remember that substance and it took a little while to get going, so.
About a year.
Was it a year?
Sure, even if it's a three year lease and you want to get out in two and a half, you have to, you have to. There's the only thing that's not in there, and I'm sure they're going to want, their lawyer will probably say, there's got to be a remedy for lost rent during that time unless they can mitigate it or get it out. And I know, and you know, you're mayor, they don't, they don't indicate that they have an intention of trying to actively pursue somebody to lease it. They're more looking for a bulldozer.
I offered eight cents a month. On Melville here.
I don't think the other person offered, but I did offer all the other things for the same, the same year every day that it was split up.
We say this one could be your answer.
Yeah, that's right.
We're trying to figure out a lot of things, a lot of options just for emergency purposes in the interim.
It could be. I mean, the parks director, wherever she is right now, is just cringed over trying to get that into her schedule. I'm sure, but.
Unfortunately, the commission is the one that's going to make the call, I guess.
Sure, but it is, it's a building. I, I believe we adopt the twenty twenty S R C A contract for services.
Well, with the changes documented.
Do you need to stack those changes?
What changes would they?
Just fish for your comments.
Number three, consideration, you want us up the building. Put in there. Repairing, routine repair, maintenance.
Yeah, what else? Was there another one on this one? I don't think, I don't, not really. Did anybody else say anything?
I'll, I just mentioned that I'd like, you know, referrals from the former, thank you, because I have a capital in the section. It doesn't need to be added. I was just.
Okay, so that one changed.
Yes.
Okay, is Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
You get paid. You get paid.
We really do appreciate it. I would do a good thing for city of Greenwood and stuff like that. And our livelihood is very important. We couldn't do it without y'all just getting. Now, I wasn't around when that first initial lease was done. I've kind of adhered to a lot of things over the years.
Well, we appreciate it. Obviously, we would not be here if it weren't for those folks at, so. So the thought process on the lease agreement is to table. Am I understanding that correct?
Yes.
Slow down until we get the farmer's bank and just iron out some details in my. Can you give me a little for that? So when you go in that.
But this one?
Make a motion to table the lease agreement.
Motion second to table.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Wes Terry?
Yes.
Okay, we are at number eleven in local agreement. This is not any different than what you had in your hands before.
Nothing's changed.
No, sir. The only news that has changed. I received, I was, was in Tom's office the other day, again. We were in, I was in Tom's office the other day visiting about something completely different. And we have been waiting news from Fort Smith, as you all know, about the possibility of what the cost would be to to build at Fort Smith on their dispatch services. And I received a call from Carl Gethin. And he said, I don't think you're going to want to hear this, but you've been waiting so on and on and on and on. It took you a long time. And I'm going to hold you to all that too for just a second. Sixty thousand dollars up to ninety thousand dollars is what it could cost the city of Greenwood to. Is what Fort Smith, the city of Fort Smith will charge the city of Greenwood for dispatch services.
Sixty up to ninety?
That's correct. So in my opinion, we don't. We just don't have a whole lot of anything to fall back on. At first glance, if you remember way back when this was first presented, I'll say this, and I've said it more than two, three times publicly, I think the way this was presented to us was a lot of the, was my, some of my part with it, to be honest with you, despite the numbers, I didn't, I didn't necessarily like the way it was presented, but it was. And none of the other communities did either. Of the ten of us, I think there's ten of us over the past couple of months, some of those cities have decided to go ahead and vote to, to do it, to enter into this contract. They had no choice pretty quick. I think we were the ones that probably had a chance of having a choice. At first, I asked the chief and I asked the chief if we couldn't, if we absolutely had to have some of these things that we would be not available to us. And I think, I think you agree that we probably are right, but then after we looked at it closer, we will be so all right as we thought we would be. And I don't know the specifics about what all was, I mean, I know you're talking about checking tags, things like that. Is that, is that, or having backup, knowing that backup's coming, those sorts of things that are obviously very important. In my opinion, it's, I think we are kind of stuck over there.
I'd like to make. Look at approving this with two contingencies, you know, one is that the judge releases the areas that we were wanting to annex so we can continue the annexation. And the other one is that in light of the new charges for nine one one fees as far as that they've raised, that we look at it again in light of, you know, those charges coming in to see, you know, they may be getting adequately funded from the increase in.
Cell phones.
Our cell phones and.
I agree with AC. We've got, they've got funding coming in and we do not know how much it is.
That's correct.
I almost, I prefer to wait till that funding come in and see what it is. If they need our help at that point, I'm all for it. Also with AC.
Understand this.
The property that is holding us back from drug.
And I'm not sure, we, I've reached out to the judge to find that's what that situation is on the property in the concession court and heard, not heard back. Sheriff and I, sheriff and I. The chief and I met with the sheriff and that message was taken back to him through him, also through the sheriff and not heard anything back. I don't, I'm agreeing with what you're saying. I just know you need to know that this is ours. Those services will cease to exist the first of March, I believe.
Quit doing the emergency part of it.
No, it is not. It's only what's.
A little bit of strength and stuff on the.
Well, I think there's more, I think there's more to it. I mean, I would ask the chief to explain what it is that we would be doing with that. Again, sorry. And I'm not excited about, understand.
Well, that sixty, ninety thousand sounds like that was a deal that I don't miss.
No, I told Mr. Gethin, thank you, no thank you.
That's not like, that's not like a superior bid.
And the chief of the police was in the room when he gave that, so.
I do, before giving it to the other, want to say that I'd like to share and ask to, to start out with one, that was a possible option at the beginning of this. And kind of what you want, wait until you see what the new funds are coming in. I think they're putting a large front horse without seeing what that's going to add to their funds. And I think it would have been fair to give one, but the judge was against it and apparently sheriff was against it, saying that they, they need the two right now and don't have time to wait. We're stuck. I mean, it's just like the radio situation where you're given limited time to get new radios and basically was told if you don't get these radios, that's fine, but you're going to be talking to yourself on your old radios. This is kind of the same thing. We can look up everything on our computers as long as they're working and they are working most of the time, but sheriff's office, we still need to confirm things. I think if it was just, if they said, well, you'll just have to answer your phone after hours for non-mercy, as we get, I don't think it'd be an issue to order a phone to be on to the officers and they answer non-mercy calls on that. Now, if they're taking away, and it's hard to get an exact answer out of, out of the phone to them, but if they're taking away our opportunity to check out on traffic stops or or them taking away some of the services they confirmed they want or we can see a warrant, we just can't confirm it on the computer, so we'll get that. We can answer your phone if that's all there is to it, but I don't think that's all there is to it. What you see on that piece of paper is what they say is going to go away.
Well, this, this does not have that short list. I keep calling it short list. Was there any other document in there with this?
There was a list.
Yeah, it's not attached to the list.
Go away and that was obviously in March was, leaves us here tonight, but.
But, you know, the judge wants a response from us, but we can get a response from him on, you know, releasing the annexation areas that we want.
So you're saying if you check out on a traffic stop and.
Yes, I guess.
They're not going to, they're not going to reply back to what you're trying to tell me. Are they not? I'm saying if you get a radio, you check out on a traffic stop, I mean, is, is that someone just going to ignore it?
I think if we don't pay that fee.
How can they do that? Because here's the problem. The state has said that we can only have one dispatch per county to handle it as they've changed the law. So that's not fair to us of being able to, you know what I'm saying? I mean, okay, the law's tied our hands, the state law is tied our hands. So what do we do? If we can rely on this, so they're going to hold us hostage that we're already paying taxes. We're already paying taxes to the county for this stuff. And then they're going to take away the officer safety. If Judge Hudson's taking away officer safety because he's money hungry, he's a fool. But that can be quoted. I don't care. That's, that is wrong.
The states put this to where now they monopolize nine one one, now they, you kind of almost feel like they're extorting money.
So you do need to read the, I'm not, I'm not his advocate here, but I, but you need to read the third paragraph on this memo. I think that answers, I don't know if it's going to answer you or not, but it addresses the county sales tax that you're referring.
Well, I'm, I'm more concerned about these guys being out on, on South Park at three o'clock in the morning and the sheriff's office going to be told because we had to get over backwards and play our, play our butt mouth.
And I don't know that, I don't know that he can answer that for sure.
That's what I'm saying.
Questions that certainly I, I mean, I believe we're double fans, but at least I, I say we are tax tiered.
They're real good by coming in here and tell us we're going to do this. You can hold down, I mean, on several things.
Us and every other town, there were no cities.
You know, the New Speck.
All of them.
They all seem to vote against it, though. He's not holding us hostage.
Were holding out. Three, we are, us, we're, us, Hackett, Hartford, and Hudson. Are still have not agreed. And some of those others, they have. Well, that's not what we were talking about, Sheriff. He said, he said only the eight cities.
Well, I was told by county judge that Greenwood had agreed to it two months ago.
Yeah, well, that's obviously.
Any conflicting information? And I agree with what everybody's saying here as far as double taxation and kind of being extorted. Your remedy, I guess, is to. But in the meantime, we got the police department that's not having new services. I don't know how significantly that's going to affect that, but I know my smaller city is scared of that. Greenwood's a little bit better situated than what they are, but from out here to Will is that we have some concerns as well, so I don't know what the answer is.
So here, here's the legislative firm, thank you for goodness. Effective March one, twenty twenty, dispatching county sheriff's office will no longer provide non-emergencies dispatch services or support for the cities that choose not to participate. This will include the following. Entering cities online, which you kind of addressed, but we don't, that's dispatching non-emergency calls, entering property in N C I C, A C I C. Did you expound on that already?
I have spoken about it previously. We'd have to get someone of higher level certification to do that, that next time.
Validating property in N C I C, A C I C. Driver's license and license plate queries.
We can do that in our.
Arrest warrant queries. So is that?
We have to check. It will pop up, but they have to confirm it.
So it's a confirmation.
Now you have to confirm it?
Yes.
So.
So that's the only thing in there, UD? How about this?
Yes, pretty much. If, I don't know if that, that kind of looks like a general statement, so I don't know. I mean, obviously, the traffic stop isn't a emergency situation, so I don't know if if they just let them take our traffic. So I don't know if, if they just want to take our traffic stops. That's, that's something that they didn't answer.
Again, you know, but I've heard this field, I think, ten times now. And I've had other mayors present and I've had members of the court present. All of us were fact, but my good feeling is that everybody just says, no, I'm not going to do it. Kind of like you guys said, Lex said, you cut off these services, that's not going to work good for the sheriff department or the county judge. So you maybe play poker with them and just call their bluff and see. Because, you know, I would think that they would go back to the court, the court would approve money.
That's what we have to do as a city council. We have to cut something somewhere to make up for money needs somewhere else.
You actually budget.
We don't need to go.
It's in the budget.
My good feeling is.
I said you could use somewhere else.
Is it, is it the court, or doesn't want this on their hands? The sheriff's department doesn't want it on their hands and the county judge really doesn't want it on his hands. So I, I think Greenwood is the key card holder. If you say no, these other cities say no, are they really going to cut off the services? And so I think they're going to get a horrible political backlash.
Suicide.
It's open ended, but, but if you're working, I mean, we can just, you know, you can all leave it that everybody's for this. It's, it's going to happen, but.
Well, plus or to say, Mike, if, if we get into this, they come back again and say, oh, well, we miscalculated and we need another.
Where does it stop? That's what I'm saying. I mean, they tied our hands with this law that, you know, you don't have so many dispatches in, in, in the areas. I mean, we can't, we couldn't, I mean, not that we can afford to put our own dispatch in, but I'm just saying the state law has tied this to where we're. I mean, but each and every one of us paid taxes to the county now. So where, where does the, I mean, we don't see good spirits of the citizens of Greenwood, what the heck?
They, they don't really have to come back to us. Twenty seven thousand nine hundred and forty-eight is the, not to be less than. It's kind of open ended.
Right.
Mike, I make a motion. We decline participation in this interlocal agreement as it's been presented to us.
I say.
And motion is saved, should decline.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Dowd?
Yes.
Mr. Dan?
Yes.
Ken Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes.
Manus?
Now, we vote, and that's fine. We understand according to the chief, and I've heard what he said, I just want us to make sure. My, my alliance and your alliance, obviously, of course, the chief's is to the citizens of this town not to take, not to, not have any service that puts anybody in danger. Anymore than, well, puts anybody in danger, period.
Well, I think we need to know exactly from you, to the mayor, to this group, exactly what happens. I mean, what.
On that day?
If, yeah. If somebody comes to you and says, chief, like, like Lance said, if you're, if they just refuse to answer you, what do you know about? I mean, what do you need to react to that?
Because, because where's the, where's the fine line of non-emergency, emergency, and emergency services?
Anything that puts your, anything that puts your department in danger, we need to know that.
That's what I'm going to say. If they call 911, yeah. Our next meeting will be the first day of this going to take this.
Well, this, I mean, cutting us off would not put us at risk, but, but our citizens that are in their county have risk also. It's the way I look at it. I, I don't have the answer. Everybody struggles to make budget every year. Now we have this hour fee, now we have this fee, we have this Mount Hump fee, and I think the radio fee is coming. It's just, everybody's got their hands out, they want to trickle down to us, but we've got, I want to pass that buck to ourselves. It's getting more difficult to make every year. I get it, he's having a tough time making the budget, just like we are, but I don't have that option to say, I think someone's going to pay me now for a service. We, we certainly do all we can to help them out, you know, respond to everything that they need us to respond to. There's homicide at just a place or, or whatever it might be. I mean, you know, our officer down there pinned down my gun fire out up in that on that call where unfortunately, WQ's lost his life that day. We were one of the first agencies to arrive there with them and had two officers pinned down with gunfire. So there's nothing, I think, dispute about our mutual aid and what we provide them also. This, this request posed a bad situation. I really wish they would have said, let's try one and see where these 911 funds come in. We, mayor and I had that meeting. I think that's fair, they'll be the one and to wait and see what these funds bring in from them. I think it's going to be a lot more than what we're used to. They, I obviously cut down on the dispatcher's centers. And I think this money's going to be significant for them to get the, the help out, make budget.
They probably already got a plan to allocate that somewhere else.
Well, that's, I think if they would say. Yeah. Uh-uh, probably.
Well, this is like I asked, the mayor originally, we've got nobody wants to communicate or even talk to you about dispatch.
Well, they're talking about it right now and, and I think that was this week. They're supposed to talk to you.
Well, I mean, because.
Mayor, there was a mail. Sent out to you and I, Chief Dawson, January 31st, about an invitation to 911 work deal on February 27th.
Yes.
Basically what they're doing is, now Joe Turner has convinced, had asked them to look into consolidation. Dispatches up there and so this, I believe is probably where it is. Chief Christensen, they asked him what the, the actual contract was. And he said, he was with me that, that day, June on Friday, when they had their second meeting, but it has to do with that. So on the, February 27th, we should have a little bit better understanding of what's happening with the 911 and where that. Hopefully they'll be talking about where that money is going.
I agree, yeah, yeah, I got that.
I still feel a little bit of a suggestion to do the 29 year contract, see what happens with all of that money comes in, cell phone money, and reevaluate that money starts coming in.
They're going to have to get them to agree that.
Yeah.
Which I don't know if you can, just like, seems like, sounds like it appears that we get at least some kind of oversight through the iron. I can tell you just this last, this last week, we got two complaints that end on 911. We're going to be paying, we're going to receive complaints that I've dealt with years just because started complaining about free service. They confirmed the warrant to someone that we placed in the desk, but it wasn't an actual medical warrant. So we had enough of them bringing back here, that's, that's not a good thing. And, you know, they put out all those themselves apparently on these, on this homicide suspect from fire. And so we called up there almost two hours later, didn't have the information. One of the officers couldn't stop that guy. Who knows about, it's just things that we haven't complained about before that I have kept those two layers to prepare to send up there. And I may hold them, so I'll see what you guys can do. We've got, I think if we're going to pay, we've got to have a say so. And they never said yes to that or even replied back to us.
I, I think Lance has got a very good comment that it is double taxation. I mean, we're, we're collecting taxes as just following it, you know, I compared to, you know, smashing down. I think maybe we, we look at it as, as a group of cities and, you know, of, of heading to court, you know.
It's not fair that they, they tightened the rates down on these dispatch centers. You know, like I said, people have said about, we can't afford to throw in dispatch, but. Hope is hostage and, and like, you know, what it says, I mean, storing money for the first month, I feel about it. I mean, it's like, you're going to do this route and cut you off, but the only going to do one of those arms together because you're going to do it. So where does that come into play?
It's going to answer to the fourth branch of government.
Because, because some of that stuff is the, the chicken, some of the non-emergency stuff ends up being emergency. You know what I'm saying? It goes from, it goes from, oh, it's just not, to, to it's a bad deal, you know, it's like that. And, and so where, where you, that's what I'm saying, where do you find that fine line of non-emergency and emergency when you call the sheriff's office?
Most people call 4119, our 4119 number for emergencies. It's just the number they know and it's a dollar one, that's what they do, so.
So were they, were they going to, they're going to have a special number to try to, oh, well, that's not emergency, we can take that, you know, I mean, so it's just. I don't think it was really well fought out on, on their end. And they're not going to give anything but, I, I agree. We ought to have just a little bit of a say so and incentive work. Half of the, you know, we'll take a little of those, I'd say the thirty grants is in the budget.
Well, I will take back, I will take it back. They will, they will be informed, I suppose, I don't wish we have to inform anything to, to the chief, right on. We have that meeting, both chiefs and myself with 911. So if we come back with some good information for you, I'll come back, come back and get together, call a special call meeting, like, you know, what that meeting reveals if anything in regard to more taxes or any other. And, and if, and with your, if you want me to, not necessarily in the meeting, but on one-on-one with the, with the judge, if you want me to. I don't know that you want, somebody mentioned one-year contract, is that, I guess that was cheap. Is that something you want me to look into either at that time or after we find out what February's meeting presents us with?
I'd say find out what's going on in February, then we'll just go from there.
Okay, obviously, our next council meeting would be the day after this thing comes out.
March 6.
But, so obviously we could have a meeting, a special call meeting. I would say, and I'm not only to say, I would say this as far as bringing in a matter of annexation or anything else that we have in the workings or could have in the workings with county. I think on our part to bring that into the scenario would be no different, in my opinion, than what they might be doing on the other side of this. I would not want to use that for any leverage. I would, I would hate to think that would.
Be with any of what would be.
Well, you don't want to leverage.